We're gonna get rid of these. Okay, Diane, you ready? Okay. We're gonna call the meeting to order at this time. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Village of Royal Palm Beach Regular Council Meeting. Today is Thursday, June 16th at 6:30. I ask that everyone would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Although we've been living in a world of COVID for three years now, I still keep forgetting about Siri's sister, or whoever that is. Anyway, welcome everyone this evening. So glad to have you here. As I said, it is June 16th already. Can somebody slow it down a little bit? I mean, it's, time is just going by so quickly. At any rate, we're gonna start off the meeting with reports. It's the third Thursday of the month, and we had this morning the Transportation Planning Agency Board Meeting. Nothing really significant happened today. We did pass our year '23 through '27 five-year tip update. And there still were the dissenting voters on that because of the State Road 7 project being part of the tip. So the representatives from West Palm Beach voted no, there were two. Commissioner Weiss voted no, as he has been doing, because, I guess, because West Palm Beach is part of his district. And we had a new, Lake Worth Beach has joined in to vote no. I'm not sure why, but the Vice Mayor who was representing today recorded a no vote because of the State Road 7 project. But it's still going forward, and FDOT is still working with this, so eventually, I believe, we'll get done. With that, though, Selena, we'll start with you.
Good evening, everyone. We have concerts in the park over at Commons Park the first and third Thursdays of the month. So tomorrow night is a foreigner tribute band, so come on out. The weather should be nice, not like last, last time. We do have July 4th again this year, coming back out as we've had in the past. But now it's gonna be the weekend extravaganza, so it's actually a four-day event. And then it culminates with concerts, activities. We have the golf tournament, fishing tournaments on the 4th, but it's gonna be the whole weekend this year. We talked about at the Recreation Advisory Board Meeting, the expansion of the Rec Center. The cameras, the security cameras are gonna be added there, the things that we're doing out in the parking lot. So in the next couple of years, you can see how that's gonna change and the extension that they're adding to that. The Young at Heart had their last meeting luncheon of the year, and I had the honor of installing the incoming board, so it was really nice to do that.
Thank you for filling in.
Yeah, my pleasure. They were great, so a great group again. And then they are getting ready in September to welcome membership again, and they are going back to the original membership level that they had, so they're not restricting it. Everyone should be welcome, and they can fit in a couple hundred people as they have in the past. I'd like to say congratulations to Councilwoman Ruduski for being installed in the League of Cities Board. So we went to the installation. We attended the Memorial Day event, so thank you very much to the staff and everyone involved in the one that we had at the village, the American Legion, the Boy Scouts, everybody. And then also Inspired Living did one as well. So those residents that they have staying with them who are unable to come out, it was very nice to see that. We all attended the Citizen Summit, and it was very informative. I love that because you think you know what the residents want, and then when you're there and they tell you, and you can sit and just listen to them, you go, oh, okay, well, I knew they felt this way, but I didn't realize this.
But the key word for us was, "listen."
Listen.
We were listening.
Yep.
Yes.
We were listening. Bradford slapped my hand a couple times because I tried to interject, and he, yeah, thanks. We do have the Citizen Summit Workshop coming up on Thursday, July, uh, June 23rd, sorry, at 6 o'clock at the Cultural Center. And you can find all this information on our website at royalpalmbeach.com.
State Road 7.
The workshop, yes. Yeah, that's coming up. And then also Solid Waste Authority is doing their Business Power Network, so you can go to swa.com and get information on that. So they're really working with local and small businesses and making sure that they have the tools that they need in order to generate business and to expand theirs that they have, and just the different classes that they offer them as well. And that completes my report.
I just had the pleasure of going to the Royal Palm Beach High School graduation along with Councilman Hamara. It was nice to see things get a little bit back to normal from what it was last year, a little better this year. And then most of us got to attend the virtual CAFSI Scholarship Awards, which is always a great event to see, you know, successful kids in our neighborhood and our future, and helping them out, going along, seeing ones from the past. For me, is the best part, going to be doctors and lawyers, and we had several of them going to Florida State this year. So that was a good deal. It was about time.
I don't, I don't know if you saw, every time they talk about Florida State, because I have a grandson in Florida State.
Oh, great.
I wasn't doing the child, no, I wasn't.
Only I was that obnoxious, but that's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's all, okay.
Good evening, everyone. You can always count on Brett getting involved as soon as that comes up. I wanted to just share with everybody an organization that a lot of people may not know about. It's called the Florida Regional Councils Association. I'm not too wild about how the abbreviation is actually pronounced. It's called FRICA. But every time I hear that, it just makes me shake my head. But the importance of this organization is that it brings together all of the regional planning councils from throughout the state. And they coordinate, consolidate, put together a unified front in dealing with our state legislature on important matters that actually bear mostly at a regional level, but obviously trickle down into the counties and municipalities as well. So that organization represents 10 regional planning councils, like Florida League of Cities, represents 411 cities, like the Florida Association of Counties, represents 67 counties. They come together and share information. They also put together legislative priorities, which was one of the topics for the the meeting, which took place on Friday of last week in Tampa. Now, I was asked to attend the meeting because I was asked if I would be willing to serve as the first Vice President of the organization. And I said I would, and I'm really glad I did because one of the things about participating in organizations like TPA, Florida League of Cities, is that you get to meet individuals that otherwise you would not know, and can actually leverage those connections in one way or another, learning from them, getting their assistance, getting their advice, and that type of thing. So this is another one of those opportunities to do that. But it also turned out to be a particularly useful meeting in that we all got a chance to meet our new Secretary of Transportation for Florida, and his name is Jared Perdue. And he is actually a product of FDOT, and he, for the past 18 years, has worked his way on up the ranks. He was the Secretary for the District 5, which is up in the northern Panhandle area. And now he's been asked by the Governor to serve as the Secretary of Transportation. He shared with us his philosophy about a lot of things. We talked about Vision Zero, the safety and emphasis on that, striving to to curtail the number of crashes, and especially the fatal ones, and also the ones with serious injuries, which unfortunately Florida has more of than most other states in the Union. So working really hard on safety is an initiative that he is certainly gonna take up. But he also talked about working well with the individual municipalities and counties, and also with the TPAs and MPOs. And in fact, he had a phrase that he was using, and that was "community-centric planning and execution." So I'm looking forward to seeing there being actually some action behind that basic idea. He pointed out that one of his additional focuses is something we talk a lot about, multi-modal transportation, something other than car-centric kinds of moving of people, moving of goods, moving of services. He used the word "choice," and of course, I think that fits in well with the administration in offering up choices. But choice is something, of course, that we all like to see. So there's a lot of really, really good thoughts. He does bring 18 years of experience in FDOT with him, so I'm hopeful for that. They've also got a record budget of $12.6 billion for FY 2023. And since most of the real serious initiatives ultimately come down to money, he's starting in a very good place. I think a lot of what he said, and of course, the way he came across, is very authentic, very sincere, and of course, with his background, very knowledgeable. So I think we may have some opportunities to work at the state level that we haven't had before, and I look forward to seeing more of that. That completes my report, since everybody talked about all the other things.
Sure about that? Would be interesting. Very close. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. No, nothing was missed, so tito on that. No report.
Okay.
No report, Mayor. Since so many things got pulled from the agenda, I will take just a moment. I wanted to let everybody know. It was very interesting. I was in Alaska a couple weeks ago, and while we were having lunch in Sitka, we walked past City Hall, so we decided to pull their city council meeting, agenda for their next meeting. And it was interesting and comforting because they're dealing with the exact same things way up there, that were, you know, military rates, budget hearings, vacation rentals, public transportation. All that stuff is the exact same topics that, you know, you travel as far away from South Florida as you can get in the United States, and it's the same issues, except they had one thing. They had a code enforcement issue that was people leaving trash out that attracts grizzly bears.
Oh, okay.
So that was different than what we have, but that seemed to be an interesting topic. So nothing particularly legal, but I thought that that was an interesting experience.
In Alaska, those, they're the regular bears that we have down here, or they...
No, these are the grizzly bears that like rip your face off with their claws. And then eat you.
Well, it's the same. Really? I guess what the, the, the way you get, the way it gets handled is if you're too close, you won't be able to talk about it or something like that, right?
That's your penalty.
That's the penalty, right? That's not a good penalty, but okay.
Well, you know, they also, they also put out the guidance. You don't have to be faster than the bear, you just need to be faster than the person between you and the bear.
That's the same thing with the dinosaurs.
Exactly, exactly. But it's interesting, Keith would point out that there's so much that we have in common with somebody who is geographically so far removed from us. That's one of the reasons that these associations are beneficial. We have some of the same problems, and somebody out there probably has a good solution, and we might be it, or somebody else might be it.
Or you could say that we're dealing with global issues, but...
Either way.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right, that concludes the reports. At this time, if anyone has a petition they'd like to present to the council, now would be the time. Seeing none, I'm closing the floor to petitions. Do you have a petition, ma'am? Going to statements from the public. I have one comment card on a non-agenda item, and I'd like to invite Gina Levek. What's the, what's the, give it to me.
Levek.
Levek, okay.
Close.
But anyway, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Gina Levek. I am the intake and compliance manager for the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics, and I am also a proud resident of Royal Palm. So I just moved to Royal Palm a couple of years ago from the acreage, so this is my first city life.
Welcome.
If you will. At any rate, I am here today just to let you know who we are and that we're here to answer any questions. You guys have two village attorneys that can answer all your questions initially. However, if you have questions that involve our office, we are available all the time. You can send us an email or give us a call. We'll be able to answer your questions, and if we can't, we'll provide you with an advisory opinion. Our motto is "ask first, act later," so that you don't get yourself in trouble or in the situation you can't get yourself out of. So that's merely what we're here for, and I am the liaison between the village and our office. And if you have any questions, please feel free to call me. I've given you all of my business card as well as our guide to the Code of Ethics. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, you didn't start your three-minute clock. Does that mean I have to start over? And I'll see the Alaska thing in a couple of months. I'm going in August.
Really?
Love it. Check the agenda out there, White.
Thank you, Gina. Thanks so much for coming, we appreciate it. Okay, Diane, did we get any other advanced requests for non-agenda items?
Just the one I just handed you.
No, non-agenda, I said.
Non-agenda, no, Mayor.
This is only, this is consent agenda, okay.
And I'd just like the record show that all members are...
That's a good idea. Let's let the, Diane, please let the record show that all members are proud. I knew it was something there. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ray, we have anyone out there with their hand raised for a non-agenda item or a consent agenda item?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay. I do have a comment card on a consent agenda item, consent agenda item number seven. Delisha Brooks-Hamilton, is that correct? Come on up.
It's for the RFP for the ice cream vendor services for the Veterans Park?
Yes, that's item seven.
That is number seven? Good evening, everyone. My name is Delcia Brooks-Hamilton. Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager in the community of Royal Palm Beach. I'm here to represent Pangia Grill. I'm the CEO of Pangia Grill, which was established in 2015 as a small minority woman-owned business in Palm Beach County. I have been in the restaurant business for the past 30 years in Florida, in the Caribbean, and also in Central America. I'm originally from Central America. My family have always owned and operated restaurants and hotels until this current day. I also own and operated, owned and operated a travel agency franchise in Boca Raton for the past 13 years. Needless to say, I have been a small business owner for quite some time in Palm Beach County. For the record, I'm requesting an answer. I am also here today because I, I feel that I have been excluded and not given the opportunity and the additional points allocated for small minority women-owned businesses. And to compete for the ice cream vendor service, RFP, for Veterans Park, I feel that I have been discriminated upon as a woman and a minority small business owner. That needs, needless to say, that needs to change, and I'm asking the council today to address this discrepancy and make it inclusive. Thank you very much.
I don't think that's any, I don't think, thank you for your comment.
Agenda item seven proposes the award of that, of that bid, and no action's been taken yet. If the council approves the village's recommendation, then that award will be granted.
We should. I don't, I don't understand the basis of her claims, and you can't just come out to a meeting and tell us that you believe this is what happened, and then we're supposed to just react and respond to that. But I do know our process has been open and fair, and anyone who's had a chance was able to participate in that application process, so. It was, no, I'm not taking any more questions. This is, I'm not opening this up for discussion and debate. You came here, you shared your concerns, and I'm just telling you, I don't know of any basis for those concerns, so. Do you want to add something to that, Ray? Go ahead.
The concern that you brought up was not receiving additional points for being a minority woman-owned business. Our purchasing procedure does not, does not differentiate the bidders that way in award points in any categories. It's not what we do in our, in our purchasing.
Okay.
So it wasn't available to award.
Do you want to add something?
I just have a question for you, though. Are you registered with the county as a small woman minority-owned business? Okay, so you did do the Office of Equal Business Opportunity and registered, so for other opportunities out there where points would be awarded for that, that they can find you?
That the county.
That the county, correct. Okay, thanks, that's why I want to make sure.
That only applies to the county level issue, not the city. Anything else?
Just to the extent that there is a bid protest process, this is not it tonight.
No, definitely not.
So I just...
Yeah. Okay. You want to add something?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. I was just gonna ask if, if, would you, would you come back up here so we can, I can ask you a question? Okay, well, here's the thing.
I don't want to get, this is that, I don't want to get into dialogue about what her accusations are.
I understand. What I was, what I was going after is, is she aware of what the protest?
Bid protests.
The bid protest process is. I can ask you all, but I don't know if you know whether she knows, that's what I was gonna ask her. If not, my recommendation is, reach out to her, explain what that process is, so that she can formally protest if she feels that she needs to do that.
Yeah, but the protest, it's based on something that we don't do. That's her whole point. We don't give up the points for, that's not in the process.
But my problem with that is we are adjudicating that, and I don't think, I understand the logic in your, yeah, I'm totally in agreement. It's just that we don't adjudicate if there is a protest process.
As we sit here right now, there's nothing to protest because no, nothing's been awarded. We haven't gotten to that stage in the process.
She wants to pursue, you want to pursue the bid protest process, you're free to do that, so, okay. Any other questions? Comments? Ma'am, where is your comment? Come back up. Come up so we can record what you're saying, please. Yes, thank you.
I was not given the opportunity to protest, so I have sent three different emails to the city manager, to the clerk, and I am requesting to get the manual of the procedure of qualifications. I was never notified when the board got together and gave the points. Now, I felt that I should have been given the opportunity to appeal.
All right, but that's, okay, you're making assumptions about what the process and protocol is. And certainly, we'd be glad to provide you with the documentation that tells you what the protest process is. But that's, that's as far as we're gonna go, and there's nothing more we're gonna can do about this this evening. So thank you. Any other questions, comments?
No, sir.
Should we proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So we didn't have, we don't have any other, have no further comment cards on consent agenda items? Or on, on non-agenda items? We have no hands up? So I'm closing the floor with a public comment on the consent agenda, and at this time, Diane, could you give us a consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of May 19th, 2022. Two, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 102 in the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $160,000 from undesignated fund balance 3990100 Okeechobee Boulevard West Landscape Improvements, PW2006. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a contract with a cut above landscape and maintenance incorporated to the lowest responsible responsive bidder for the construction of landscape improvements for the Okeechobee Boulevard West Landscape Improvement Project, PW2006, in an amount not to exceed $235,812.58. Four, authorization for the mayor to execute a participation agreement to sign on to the additional settlement agreement between the state of Florida and Walgreens and any future settlement agreements related to the opioid litigation and resulting remediation. Five, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute consulted services authorization number 20 with Erdman Anthony of Florida Incorporated to provide engineering design services for the water treatment plant site modification, PW1902, demolition of the water treatment plant. The cost for said services shall not exceed $89,900. Six, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold concerts for weekends, for weekend spectacular at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Saturday, July 2nd and Sunday, July 3rd, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. Seven, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with Cool Runnings LLC as recommended by the selection committee as the most responsive responsible proposal for a monthly lease amount of $300 for the use of Building 1036A in Veterans Park to provide ice cream vendor services.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or members on council, I'll look for motion?
May I pull, oh, go.
Item seven.
And I'll pull item number four, please.
Seven and four. All right. Look for a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda, manage item four and item seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that items, all items on the consent agenda with the absence of item four and seven were approved. Five zero.
Just real quick, and I think the village attorney can help us with this. So I know this is part of the agreement with the village and the MOU with the state of Florida, but how does this increase that or add to it, or does it mean anything for our residents?
This is, this is an additional settlement agreement, and we've seen a few of these. But it functions in the same manner. The village would agree to accept the terms of the settlement agreement, including the estimated dollar amount, which for this one is around just under $46,000. You waive your rights to file your own lawsuit against, this one's for Walgreens. But it's the exact same, it's the exact same document that the village has approved for the prior settlement agreement. So this is additional funding, or additional settlement funds from an additional pharmaceutical company. This time, it's Walgreens, and we expect there may be additional ones coming down the pike, which is why this agenda item also includes the village council authorizing the village manager to handle future ones that come through, so we don't have to keep bringing them back like this.
This is payment over time, right?
It is.
And it's just for the municipality, so individuals cannot go after that, or can our residents benefit from this?
No, all of these have multiple pots of money, but this is the pot that goes to the municipality.
There is a pot, though, that individuals can, if they can make their case, yeah.
But that's not part of these.
Correct, that's why I wanted to clarify it, that it is, this is not that. Just, you know, right. I think, so that's it. So I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number Four.
Second.
We have a motion to second for Consent Agenda Item Four, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Diane, please let the record show Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda Item Four was approved. Five zero.
I guess these are more Ray and Keith questions. I just want to make sure my understanding of the process is right. We put out a request for a proposal, we get them back, we have a process where we rank them, and then based upon those ranks, there's a recommendation to the council as to who award, to award the contract to, correct? That's the way it works. So at this point, that's what we're doing. We're deciding whether we're gonna do that or not. Any kind of challenge or issues with that occur after the decision's actually been made, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just wanted to make sure we were, my understanding of the process was right in that we were doing it correctly. So I'd make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C7.
Do you know if there are comments from council? All right, we have a motion to second. You seconded it?
Yes.
Oh. All right, we have a motion to second for Agenda Item C7, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show agenda item consent agenda item seven was approved five zero. With that, we'll get to our regular agenda. Agenda item R one is a public hearing for second reading and adoption of ordinance number one zero two six, an application two-two dash four zoning text, an application by Reed and Associates regarding a zoning text amendment to chapter twenty-six of the village's zoning code to include senior housing facility as a special exemption use in the industrial general zoning district, and, I guess we're gonna hear from you? This is not, yeah, it's not a quasi judicial.
Yeah, as a special exception use in the industrial general zoning district within the village, the subject use is proposed to be added to the village's zoning code under section twenty-six ninety-three three I, shown in the ordinance number one zero two six. Currently, a senior housing facility is located within an industrial general zoning district and is considered a legal non-conforming use. The applicant would like to expand the existing senior housing facility, however, the legal nonconformity cannot be expanded or enlarged under village code, therefore, the applicant has applied for text amendment in order to make the existing use a codified special exception use in the industrial general zoning district in order to allow the expansion to proceed. The local planning agency considered this application on April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, and recommended approval by vote of four to zero. Staff requests a rec, uh, staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-two dash four. With that being said, ma'am, I'll turn the floor back over to you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the applicant, like to make any comments?
I'm just here to a, answer any questions you might have.
All right, you satisfied with the presentation provided by staff?
Yes.
Okay. Diane, do we have any advanced comments, uh, from the public on agenda item R one?
No, ma'am.
Ray, we have anyone with their hand raised for agenda item R one?
No, ma'am.
All right, I do not have any comment cards submitted on agenda item R one, so I'm c, closing public comment on this agenda item, and open up for com, uh, comments from members on council. Seeing none, then I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, uh, congratulations.
Very much.
Uh, Diane, please let the record show that agenda item, um, R one, which is the second reading, was approved five zero. Thank you. Agenda item R two is also a public hearing and second reading and adoption of ordinance number one zero two-nine, amended chapter six, buildings and building, uh, regulations, article nine, excuse me, article eleven, did I say nine? Um, standard housing code to add entirely new division four landlord tenant notice requirements in sections six dash two zero zero, notice of termination of monthly residential tenancy without specific duration, and six dash two zero one written notification requirements related to rental payment increases of, uh, for all residential tendencies to require sixty days written notice for termination of tendencies and increases in rental rates. Keith, I believe you're on.
Thank you, ma'am, this is second reading, this, uh, and, and your, your recitation for the record did adequately recite the title to the ordinance, um, this came as direction from the council through the strategic planning process, um, as the title indicates, this adds two new sections to the village's code, uh, that attempt to provide some relief to, um, residents who rent their properties, um, specifically if, if you're in a rental situation that does not have a, uh, a definite term, but is month to month, it would require sixty days written notice before that that can be terminated, and then, um, the other section would require, uh, also sixty days written notice if there's any intent by the landlord to increase the rent by, the current rent by more than five percent at the end of the term.
Okay, okay, um, Diane, do we have any, uh, advanced public comments?
No, ma'am.
I'm agenda item R two, no? Ray, does anyone have their hand raised? On agenda item R two?
No, ma'am.
All right, I have not received any public comment cards on agenda item R two, so I'm closing public comments on agenda item R two, and look for comments from members on council. This is our second reading, but... All right, I just want to, uh, share then that, uh, we will, we will be releasing a press release on this, um, we will be looking to get that out to the media, both, uh, papers and television, and one of the primary reasons for that is I want to make sure we state clearly what the intent on how this new, uh, ordinance will, will be implemented and how it works, but more importantly, I want us to get the word out to our citizens who are, may be in this situation, that this will affect them, uh, and hopefully provide some relief, uh, in, in, in terms of what's been going on. And generally, I don't know if the public knows this, but the current statute's in place, only gives a tenant fifteen days, all right, to vacate, find a new place to live if they're hit with a massive, uh, rent increase, which is just, uh, hopefully give them more time to, uh, have an orderly transition and find a different place, that's the purpose for the sixty day extension on that requirement, so. If there are no comments from council, I'll look for a motion.
Just real quick one thing, and this is a Keith question then, when does this go into effect, so that as we wrap it towards the end of the month?
That's a good question, it's gotta be in our press release, so.
I believe it's effective upon adoption, which would be tonight, um, immediately.
That's very interesting, no?
Yeah, this will be effective, um-
I thought it was effective July one, no?
Well, that's why I was asking, just for clarification.
Was silent?
It's, actually, it's silent, so in cases where the ordinance is silent, state, state law, uh, indicates that, uh, it becomes effective ten days after adoption.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, you want something every day, okay, so that makes it-
Twenty-nine, so July first.
Oh, wow, okay, okay.
It's a holiday weekend, you know, we're rolling. I make a-
Any other questions, comments?
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
Second.
We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that, uh, regular agenda item two was approved five zero for the second reading, and it's now will be in effect ten days from, from tonight. Thank you, okay. Agenda item R three is a public hearing to consider a variance application two-two dash eight, an approval of variance order V C dash two-two dash zero six, and an application by R P Logistics LLC to allow a warehouse building with a building height of thirty-seven feet nine inches and a parapet wall height of eight feet above the building height, where village code sections two-six dash nine-two sub-four sub-D and two-six dash two-two requires a maximum building height of thirty-two feet and a maximum parapet wall height of five feet above the proposed building height, a variance of five foot nine inches for the building height and for three, and three feet for the parapet height. The property located at one-one-three-one, one-one-four-one, one-one-five-one, and one-one-six-one North State, uh, uh, seven, within the Aldi parking P I D, and I guess, this is a quasi judicial process, so we have to have people's want it.
Thank you, sir, is the applicant present? Can you approach the podium for me, sir, and state your name?
I'm Mark Smiley, Smiley and Associates.
Thank you, and I'll swear at this time, you and Bradford, and do you both swear from this all the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any expedite disclosures on twenty-two dash eight.
None. All right.
Thank you again, ma'am. Um, the variance request is being made in conjunction with a site plan approval, an architectural approval construct, to construct a one thou, or a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred square foot office warehouse combination building. Building height is the measure of the vertical distance measured in feet from the average finished grade of all exterior corners of the building, and the applicant is proposing a building height of thirty-seven feet nine inches for a variance of five feet nine inches, and to allow a parapet to extend eight feet above the proposed roof height of thirty-seven feet and nine inches, where village code only allows for parapets to extend five feet above the roof height for a variance, in this case, of three feet. And I, on this slide, you can see the parapets circled there in blue. Um, village council can grant variances when special conditions and circumstances exist do not result from the actions of the applicant, will not confer on the applicant any special privilege, and literal interpretation of provisions of the division would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Minimum variance, um, that will make possible the reasonable use of the land will be in harmony of the general intent. Purpose of the division will not be injurious to the area involved. The applicant contends that more and more warehouse space is needed to be clear height within the warehouse, which is the height to which goods and inventory can be stored, becomes more important, whereas five years ago, a clear height of twenty-five feet within the building was considered adequate. Um, the justification also explains that the variance to the parapet wall is not only aesthetically pleasing, but it also allows the elevation of the building to comply with provisions of section two dash seventy-five, which encourages a variety of detail to prevent monotony of the design in single building projects such as this one. Village staff generally agrees with the applicant that the proposed design meets the intent of the requirements to its furthest extent without negatively impacting the existing development. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and again, staff is recommending approval of this application. I'll turn the floor back over to you, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bradford. Uh, does the applicant choose to make any comments?
Uh, the only comment I would say is, we worked very well with, uh, Bradford's team and staff, and they, they were very good in guiding us through the system. Uh, the developer is a longtime resident of Palm Beach County, been here for almost thirty years, and we're excited to build this project for sure.
Good, okay. Diane, do we have any advanced comments on agenda item R three? No? Ray, anyone have their hand raised?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, I have not received any comment cards on agenda item R three, unless someone wants to comment, I'm gonna close public comment on agenda item R three, opening up for comments and questions from council.
I just, I have a couple of questions, I, I don't have a, a problem with it, just for clarification, so it's a hundred and twenty-eight point five square feet is the, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet is the project. Can you put that in perspective, because it's like a, average Publix, is it two hundred thousand square feet? Like, what are we looking at?
So I don't do, I don't do Publixes, but, um-
Well, just give us an idea of what is that, yeah? They're fifty thousand, okay, that's what we're-
I would say it would be like, it would be like a, maybe a, a Publix cut in half, you know, not, I mean, the, the width of the Publix, but not the depth of the, of the Publix, so to speak.
Right. Okay. So a Publix is fifty thousand square feet, all right, so it's-
Oh, it's fifty?
Okay, so this is what it's like?
The new one will be anyway.
All right, just so we can-
The depth wise is not, is not as deep.
Right, because I know it's a narrow property and stuff like that, okay, and then, do you have an intent already in mind of what the warehouse is for?
Uh, no, most of them are speculative, but I think we, uh, we supplied a list of typical vendors, and they're all, most of, most of the tenants are, are local businesses, so it kind of helps feed, so, feed the local economy, um, and that's, you know, once we get going, we generally start getting people calling on this.
So is it commercial, um, storage, or private storage?
I mean, it's industrial, but it's not industrial manufacturing, it's a light industrial, all in, yeah, storage.
Okay, so then Bradford, can you tell us what were some of the ones on the list, just for the record, do you have off the top of your head?
The-
The potential tenants.
He might not have-
No, I do not, no.
But I do have another, uh, let me get, uh, Michael, uh, Lanford up here, who works with the developer-
Okay.
And he'll be able to give you a good list of some of the people that need leasing too.
Just a handful, so we can kind of know what we're, you know, and residents know what's gonna be back there, so.
Yeah, I don't want to say something wrong, so I thought it-
Okay, thanks.
Do you want to swear him in, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you sw, could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from this all the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Um, to give you an example of, oh, my name is Michael Lanford, I work with McCrany Property Company here in West Palm. Uh, to give you an example of some of the tenants that would be occupying this building, we have several other developments here in town, and the tenants range from Florida Department of Health, uh, we have companies that do fine art storage, we have companies that do food storage, food delivery storage, things like that, we do everything from national companies to regional to local, so I could have a mom and pop plumbing supply company in there to a Terminix, to a regional distribution, it, it runs the gam, and it's hard to say.
Okay, so it, it is commercial, then?
It is commercial, it's not self-storage or anything like that, no, 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 and the typical base, the typical size, some of the projects that we have here in town that, that are, are smaller, looking at five, ten thousand square feet, these are gonna be eighteen, twenty-five, thirty thousand, so it's a little bit bigger user, um, so it doesn't really in, in, impact, excuse me, impact the amount of traffic that comes through there.
Because that was gonna be my next question then, are there, are trucks coming back and forth?
No, no, you're probably, we're, we're hoping for three tenants.
Okay, gotcha.
One would be great.
Right, and, and just don't, because that was gonna be my next, right, because the Aldi trucks already go through there, so then are we now gonna have some-
One hundred, one hundred percent, we, we would probably have less traffic than what Aldi does currently.
Okay, thank you very much.
I hope that clears it up.
I would say you know where it sits, right? This is that big area across from Aldi, which, I, the thing, I'm, I, I guess is, is, is positive, it's, it, it's something that's, it's already zoned for that type of use, right? Which is, from a concept, context standpoint, is what we try to do as much as possible.
Well, and there's residential storage right at the corner, there's, this one would be his commercial storage.
Right across from it, yeah, so, no, but-
And that's why I wanted to make sure.
It's the right, it's, the thing is, I think it's the right use of the, of the space, because remember, we've had overtures made, uh, asking us to change the zoning to residential for that land, which would not be fair to the people who wind up living there, so. Okay, that's good. Any other questions?
I have a couple, they're sort of on the same vein, but now I'm gonna go up and ask a couple of height questions. Um, Bradford, how does, how does this new, um, building compare to the Aldi warehouse height? Is it taller, is it shorter?
I do not know if the Aldi warehouse got a variance for the height, but I would venture to guess that it did, because it does have a office on the top floor. I would say if it's, if it's not equal, it's less than the height of Aldi.
Okay, thank you for that. And then regarding the eight-foot parapet, is it eight foot, are you, are you hiding things on the roof? Are you gonna have a, a, you know, like a garden party on the roof?
No, it's, it's really, as, as Bradford showed on the exhibit, it's those end features, the developer doesn't like to just do a box, and that's it, he likes to have, you know, things, make it look better by jogging in and out and up and down, and that's really specifically what it was, was those two end features, that's their standard look, and it's just three feet higher than what the code allows, just in those local, those local ends where the blue is.
Yeah.
Air conditioning and air handling type equipment's gonna be on the roof, anyway.
That's in the back, but it's, it's all behind the, the standard, the standard parapet.
Thank you.
Esthetics.
Looks good.
I don't know, ask. Go ahead. The question was-
Are you set on that color?
That the color, yeah.
I, I don't make that decision.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, that's, that is a color that they have used now for, for a while, it's a very popular color, they, they lease out their buildings very quickly, um, so, you know, why break the model?
Yeah, thank you.
We all-
I will make one comment, it's much better than the old colors.
That's frightening.
Any other questions, comments? There are no further comments or questions from council, or look for a motion.
Motion approved, regular agenda item number three.
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed, Diane, please let the record show that, uh, regular agenda item three, uh, was approved five zero. Good luck, what's your timeline on this?
Uh, thank you, as soon as we can get our permits, we're already in for the expedited start tomorrow.
So what do you think, you're gonna like, have tenants in there?
So, building permit process will start soon.
Hoping to get started at, uh-
Couple months.
Yeah, August, end of the summer.
And we're the next project, too, for the same-
There are another item, that's right, okay, they're not, we're not done with you yet.[1724.03] Okay. Start, let's get the building going now. Agenda item R four is another public hearing to consider application two-two-six, an application by RP Logistics LLC in adoption of resolution two-two-one-six confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking site plan and architectural approval to conduct, to construct one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred square foot office warehouse combination building associated with parking and landscaping on an approximately seven point nine acre site located on four vacant parcels for property located at one-one-three-one, one-one-four-one, one-one-five-one, and one-one-six-one, North State Road seven. I know what got me off, because you, when you mentioned the size, that was, I knew that was in the next one, so, that's okay.
No, I don't represent-
That's good, yeah.
Great, thank you. This is an application to construct a one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred square foot office warehouse combination. Reviewing this application, village staff considered conformity with chapter twenty-six of the villagers' code of ordinances, specifically the proposed project needs and requirements for the limited industrial zoning district at section twenty-six seventy-five, planning industrial developments as it pertains to parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervious area, parking requirements, landscape areas, maximum building height other than the variance. Here's an illustration of the landscape plan. They meet the requirements for the landscape code. Again, this is the illustration of the architecture. I'm not going to give my opinion on the colors. I don't want to run afoul with any of my council members on this. Staff has recommended approval of this application. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Mayor, with that being said, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, comment, just come to-
Just March Miley again here for the developer.
Okay, so you're okay with the way it was presented by staff?
Yes.
On this one, but I could just ask if there are any ex parte disclosures that need to be made on this item?
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Same, staff, yeah. Okay, Diane, do we have any comments, advanced comments on Agenda Item R four? Ray, any hands raised on Agenda Item R four?
No, Mayor.
I have not received any comment cards on this agenda item, and if anyone from public would like to speak, that would be the time. And the clock crowded during the wait. I'm going to close public comment on Agenda Item R four. Comments now open from members on council. Questions, comments? Seeing none, no look for motion?
Motion approved, regular agenda item R four.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
You have no opposed? Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R four was approved five-zero. Now, I'm going to ask many to update us on Agenda Item R five.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item R five, the applicant milars were not delivered to the village on time, so we need to have a postponement of this item. If you could set, make that by motion to set it for time certain for the July fourteenth council meeting at six-thirty P M.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion as stated.
So move.
For July fourteenth.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R five was reset for time certain to come back for the council on July fourteenth. You in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
We'll see you then.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Agenda Item R six is a public hearing to consider application two-two-one-two, an application by J. Morton Planning and Landscaping Architecture for consideration of landscape waivers from village code section one-five-one-three-one, sub B, sub two, to allow the elimination of the required three-foot-high berm within the south perimeter of buffer and from village code section one-five-one-three-one, sub C, sub three, to allow trees to be located, a minimum of fifty-four feet on center near utility easements, where a minimum of twenty feet on center is required for a property located at one-one-nine-two-five and one-one-nine-three-one, Southern Boulevard, situated within the Cypress Key Town Center Development. This is a quasi judicial item, so-
Thank you, sir. Could you state your name for the record, ma'am?
Yes, Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture.
Thank you. I'll swear you in. If you'll raise your right hand for me, do you swear for him to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll turn back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Village manager.
Thank you.
This is not the one we, I met with the, this is not that project, right? Just, yeah, I know, we met, I met- That's the guy he, he went to Alaska to-
Yeah, right.
We did, so I met with the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor. This is the site here. The first, the first request is a landscape waiver from village code section fifteen-one-thirty-one, B two, buffering of non-residential uses adjacent to roadway. This code section requires that the landscape screen be situated on a berm preferably undulating, no less than three feet in height, with a maximum slope ratio of three to one. The applicant is requesting approval to eliminate this berm within the south buffer. The applicant contends that a berm already exists within the landscape buffer along Southern Boulevard. Two berms, berms within the same buffer will have negative impacts on drainage for the site. As the area between the berms becomes a space where water will pool and remain stagnant, stagnant water often breeds nuisances such as mosquitoes. Existing landscape berm will not be impacted by the proposed waiver. The second request is for a landscape waiver from village code section one-fifty-one, oh, fifteen-one-thirty-one, C three, buffering of non-residential uses adjacent to roadway is also requested. This code section requires that the trees within the required continuous landscape screen be located in a minimum of twenty feet on center. The waiver request is to allow two sets of two trees adjacent to Southern Boulevard to be located more than twenty feet on center from each other. One set, one set of two trees is proposed to be located fifty-four feet on center from each other, and the other set of two trees is proposed to be located thirty-four feet. The applicant contends that this is necessary to accommodate a utility easement that will bring water and sewer from the existing lines along Southern Boulevard into the project. Staff is recommending approval of the requested landscape waiver and generally concurs with the applicant's assessment. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and again, staff is recommending approval of this landscape waiver. And I'll turn the floor back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does applicant like to make some comments?
Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I actually have a presentation for both the variance and the site plan, if you would like to hear it. But I, we don't have any objection to any of the conditions. We agree with the conditions, and so it's the board's pleasure, whether you want another presentation.
What's the consensus? Do you want to see the presentation? Okay, I see Ray shaking his head yes. Please do.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you very much. Also with me tonight is my client, Martin Heisey, the developer for this site. So between the two of us, we should be able to answer any questions that you may have. The site is four point one-six acres. It is located on Southern Boulevard. This graphic gives you a context. The, and basically, this area is primarily developed, this is truly is an infill site.
Jennifer, excuse me, we can't see it yet.
I'm on it.
Just please close confidential windows.
Be right back from this commercial break.
And really, this slide just demonstrates that it truly is an infill parcel. We have two requests that are before you tonight. The first is for a site plan approval, for a site plan modification and architectural approval. We're proposing to increase the site by about one thousand two hundred and forty-nine square feet. We're proposing to expand the plaza area, and we're proposing to add forty additional spaces. We're also proposing to reconfigure the restaurant with the drive-through. The second request is the two landscape waivers. The first waiver is to eliminate the berm on the south parcel, where the village code requires a three-foot berm. Palm Beach County Water Utilities has utility easements there and is requesting no berm. It also would be an area where water could pool and would seem to be a nuisance to the development. The second waiver is to allow tree spacing greater than twenty feet on center in two locations on the property. The reason for the increase in spacing is due to accommodate utility easements as well as a pedestrian pathway. We're not reducing the overall number of trees or landscaping that we're proposing. This site, this graphic just shows that the property is built up around the site. Our office process, the medical office facility about a year ago, it's under construction. To the east of that is the assisted living. You can see the Park Central Road on the north side of the site and the existing townhomes that have been developed. Our client has worked with the board for Cypress Key, and we actually have a letter of support for, from them for the proposed project. This is a copy of the approved site plan. I just want to point out that one of the key issues with the residents was the amount of access points on Park Central on the north side of the property. There exist three access points on the approved plan. We're proposing to modify that. Most of the setbacks are consistent with the approved plan. So this is the proposed site plan. You can see that we've reconfigured the circulation for the site. I think it works better with the existing community to the north, and it responds to comments that we heard from them. We added one right-in-only on Old Crestwood Boulevard. We did maintain one access point on Park Central. It's at the far west end of the property, and you can see that it aligns with the parking lot for the recreational center. Other than that, we eliminated the other access points. As far as ingress and egress to the site, it will primarily be from Park Central off of Southern Boulevard. We are proposing a left-turn lane into the site that will allow cars to access the property without having to go into the residential development. And then we're proposing a right-in, right-out on the Park Central in those two locations. The setbacks are generally the same. The total square footage being proposed is twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-five square feet. We're proposing three hundred and eighty-two parking spaces. And then this just compares the access points, because, again, that was important to the community. The other thing that we've done in working with the community and as well as working with staff is addressing that landscaping between our north property line and Park Central. Our proposed plan, we added a six-foot panel wall for a portion of our north property line. I think the residents were happy to see that. We have a consistent landscape theme along our north property line. It's consistent with the landscaping to the east of us. Again, another comment that we received from the community. And we have also reconfigured the drive-through. The originally approved plan had a drive-through with a menu board and speaker. The proposed plan, although we do have a drive-through, it's, will not have a menu board or speaker. You order your food on your app, and you go through the drive-through to pick it up. Otherwise, you park and go into the restaurant if you want to place an order. So again, another positive for the, the community.
This is a question on the drive-through. Where, that's in the building B two?
The B one. So the drive-through is, is right here in our proposed building.
And it's to pick up? It's not to actually order it and then pick up?
Right, it's just, you order it on your app and you pick it up at that window. Thank you. And these are the elevations. We have a condition of approval requiring the color scheme to be consistent with the existing buildings. We have no problem with that. And this is our letter of support from the board, Park Central Board, the HOA. And just in conclusion, it truly is an infill site. You know, the proposed retail development is consistent with other development along the Southern Boulevard corridor. And village staff is recommending approval of both the site plan and the waivers, and Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the project. Thank you.
Going back to the restaurant, do you know who your tenant, who that's going to be, what restaurant?
The restaurant. Is it, can we?
It's still a secret?
Chipotle.
Oh, okay. Is that definite?
There's only one restaurant on that property, correct?
There's another restaurant that, for the plaza area. It's not a drive-through.
Okay, but that's the one that was in B two, I think was that one, because it did say restaurant. Okay, so then what was that one?
That's just like a, I don't think you've placed up the, the other restaurant. It's just where you, it's a sit-down, not a drive-through.
So it will be another restaurant in that other building then too?
Possibly.
Okay.
It can't, there can be.
I think, because there was three other options, or two other options with that?
Yeah.
You done? Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay. Diane, we have any comments?
No, Mayor.
Prior comments on Agenda Item R six? No? Ray, we have any hands raised on Agenda Item R six? I have not received any comment cards on Agenda Item R six. I'm closing public comment to that agenda item and open for members, comments from members and council. Questions?
I have a question. Building A, I think it was, I don't see it in front of me right now, but did you say rec center? Is that what it's intended to go there?
No, there, it's all retail, retail, retail.
So, for example, what are we, what are we talking about there?
It could be, you could have a, a sit-down restaurant, a nail salon, an insurance company, you know, just kind of your normal inline retail or-
Neighborhood commercial. More neighborhood commercial retail, the list of uses within the, this M X D. Those uses are much more limited to, I think, you know, an ice cream shop is one of them, florist is the other. But these are your truly neighborhood commercial uses designed to provide services to the, to the surrounding neighborhoods. Okay, thank you.
Actually, and Jennifer, thank you very much for the presentation. I have a question, and depending on either you or Bradford, they can answer it. So the presentation that you gave before, and one of the topics of discussion is the berm area and the three-foot area. And I know staff recommends approval and P and Z recommended approval, but how does that differ from the original plan that you wanted versus this? Or is it the same? Because we had talked about removal of shrubbery and greenery and existing areas.
That is a completely different topic. That is not part of this application. There is no touching or modification to landscaping that is within the Southern Boulevard right away.
Perfect, okay, thanks.
We cleaned it up.
We did, right, and that's why I was wondering if, if that's why that portion was removed, because of, thank you.
Well, the only question is, is, is this going to help get it done, get something done? That's the goal for this, and the changes, correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? No further questions?
Been a long road.
Well, it is what it is. What can we tell you? But that's, this is Roppon Beach. What can I tell you? No further questions or comments from the members and council. Look for motion.
Make a motion to approve regular agenda item number six.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You have no opposed? Okay, Diane, please let the record show that Agenda Item R six was approved five-zero. And good luck as you move forward now with this endeavor.
Thank you for the vote. I appreciate it very much. And I appreciate Ray cleaning up the front of the site. I think it does look a lot better. I do want to apologize to Ray and for, and to the mayor. I was a little strong on our last phone call, and that's uncalled for.
No, no need for apology. It was business.
All right, thank you.
And we, and we still have an agenda item for you, I think.
Number seven.
Agenda Item R seven. Yeah, that's okay. Agenda Item R seven is a public hearing to consider application two-one-one-two-nine, an application by J. Morton Planning and Landscaping Architecture in adoption of resolution two-two-one-nine, confirming the council's action. Applicant is seeking site plan modification, special exception, and architectural approval to allow a restaurant with drive-through and combine one thousand two hundred and forty-nine square feet of building, buildings one, B one, and building B two in various reconfigurations- Buildings one, B1, and building B2 and various reconfigurations for a property located at 11925 and 11931 Southern Boulevard and situated within the Cypress Key Town Center. And I believe we already got the presentation on both. So with that, I guess there's no, you still don't want to make any more comments. Okay. Bradford?
Their presentation was adequate. We are recommending approval.
Yeah, the recommendation from staff was approved. Okay, before we go to council, any comment cards and any early comments on Agenda Item R7?
No comments.
Ray, any hands raised? Is any hands out there?
There's 22 people on here. It's all working people.
Don't give up the secret sauce.
I'm just guessing. I didn't know. I'm making that up.
No hands raised?
Yes. Oh, they ain't going to watch.
Since we have no hands raised, I have no public comments, uh, cards submitted here. So I'm closing public comment on Agenda Item R7. And any comments, uh, questions for members of council? If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve regular Agenda Item Number Seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed? Diane, let the record show that Agenda Item R7 was approved 5-0. And once again, good luck as you move forward. Okay, getting to Agenda Item Eight. I'm going to ask, turn this back over to Maddie and help her, let her, let us understand what we do with this.
Yes, thank you, sir. So the Planning and Zoning Department received a request to postpone items eight through 14 on your agenda tonight. They're not being postponed to a time certain, so this doesn't need to be done by motion. They're being postponed back to TSR to address some landscaping issues. So the applicant has requested that they not be heard tonight rather than they go back to TSR for additional technical staff review and potential revision to their plans.
Okay, Ray, so they're going back to TSR. Is that their desire or is that something that we require?
That was their desire.
Really?
Well.
Okay, I'm just, there's something they want to do, they...
Well, they're hoping to be able to get the change that, that was discussed with them and that will require them going back to TSR. The change that they're looking to make.
The nature of change requires TSR?
Yes.
All right, so since that's the change they want, it's their desire. All right. We'll go with that, okay. All right, so we can skip items eight through 14 is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. You do not need a motion. We're not setting them to time certain. They're going to have to come back to public hearing, so.
That's okay, all right. No. We still have Agenda Item R15, which is a public hearing for first reading and approval of application number 22-19 and ordinance number 1028, an application by Urban Design Studios regarding a comprehensive plan text amendment to the village's comprehensive plan to create entirely new mixed-use social center, MXS. Future land use designation within a future land use element. And with that, turn it over to you. This is not quasi-judicial.
Oh, it's up to you, buddy.
Bradford hit your microphone. The gentleman behind you is waving. Sorry.
Forty-plus acre mixed-use projects that would include both residential and non-residential uses integrated in a vertical rather than horizontal manner. The proposed MXS designation will allow for overall density of 10 units per acre. Mass transit or multimodal facilities may be included within the project site or within an adopted plan to be located within one-half mile of mass transit or multimodal facilities upon build-out of the MXS. The intent of the amendment is to create a future land use designation that allows for innovative and urban mixed-use developments that provide integrated, vibrant, compatible, and complementary uses within single, within a single development. This future land use designation allows for greater intensities and densities that would otherwise be permissible by typical zoning allowances. Here is the floor area ratio maximums and minimums for non-residential use, the office, the retail service, the residential use, the structured parking, or a total minimum FAR of one and a maximum of 1.2. Should this amendment be approved and adopted by village council, the applicant proposes to develop a new mixed-use center zoning district which will address land development standards in greater detail. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this application on June 14th and recommended approval by a vote of three to one with Commissioner Lorne Nicklewen dissenting. Commissioner Nicklewen had made the first motion to allow for up to 14 units per acre, up from the 10 units per acre, and that's the reason for her dissent. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to the village council regarding this application number 2219. With that being said, mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Just one point for the purposes for the, are the residents, anyone watching this? Can you tell them what FAR stands for?
Floor area ratio. So this is the rate, ratio of the square footage of...
You aren't going to dig into that, are you?
The ratio of the square footage of the use to the overall site, square footage.
Okay. So it's a matter of using mathematical modeling to put this in the right context.
So to give an example of that, so that, so the square footage of the building as it relates to the square footage of the property. So if you had a building that was, that was, if you had a property that was 10 acres and the building was three acres of that, it would be .3 FAR. If that building was two stories tall and had two floors, then it would have, it would be, it'd be .6.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that really puts in the...
So as, as a number, just so I'm clear, so as a number goes up, the height of the building?
Well, yes, because, so, so this has a minimum FAR of one. So if, so that means you're, you're building minimum square footage of the size of the property. It's 40 acres, so you will get 40 acres of finished floor at a minimum in this project. So the project, so the MXX, the MXX social requires it to be on a minimum property of 40 acres. And the minimum FAR is one, is, is one. So there has to be 40 acres of finished floor building. To get that and still have roads and sidewalks and, and parking, you have to go up.
Okay, so that, that's really what is the most noticeable response or, or equivalency to an increased FAR kind of thing is the height of the building.
Correct. Our typical zoning district, general commercial, about the best we can get out of is about .3, maybe .4 depending on the, the height of the building as it relates to the parking available. You have to, once you start getting over .5, close to .7, you're, you're, you're talking about parking garages to make it work.
That's good. That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to make comments?
Bradford covered mostly everything, but I'll take a quick look at it just to give you guys some context. Lindsay Jean-Louis with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Main Street at Total Royale. So they can see your screen. It's taking up the whole screen.
All right, perfect. Can I ask you to lift that mic up so that we can hear you? You're taller than everybody else who's been there tonight.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Lindsay Jean-Louis again with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Main Street at Total Royale LLC. And tonight we are presenting to you a request for a large-scale comprehensive text amendment to introduce the new land use designation, the mixed-use social center. To give context for the mixed-use social center, we are requesting a designation for the Lifestyle Center, a mixed-use social center that allows these large-scale vibrant mixed-use communities that are located at strategic locations within the Village of Royal Palm Beach that are also vehicles for economic generation and economic development and employment generation and creating pedestrian-oriented uses where uses are integrated for the purpose of an activity center in the western communities.
Before you sweat, what is, where's that a picture of? Where is this?
That is, if I'm not mistaken, that's a mixed-use center in, I think, that's not Boca. This isn't in South Florida. That's just a representative.
It looks like New York. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, this one, I will touch on Meisner shortly, but this is just like a representative of a type of center you would see.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So to touch on the similar mixed-use centers, as far as the product that we're looking at, we have centers in the county such as Abacoa, which is located in Jupiter, The Square in downtown West Palm Beach, Meisner Park in Boca Raton, Alton in Palm Beach Gardens, Harborside Place in Jupiter, Uptown Boca in Boca Raton. All of these mixed-use centers, while being great assets to their municipalities, anybody who lives in the Village of Royal Palm Beach has to drive more than five miles to be able to access these amenities, access this entertainment and mix of dining and retail. So here we have downtown Abacoa. You can see that they're using the new urbanism tactics with the buildings fronting the streets and the tree-lined streets. They have this amphitheater for entertainment for the residents to enjoy. You have The Square in West Palm, which has been a mainstay economically in the downtown area for more than 20 years. And although it's gone through its rebranding as of late, it's still consistently providing that landmark for the city of West Palm Beach. You have Meisner Park in Boca and you have that open green thoroughfare area with the landscaping and the retail and dining experiences on either side. And this is also a landmark in Boca and something that's been contributing to that And then Alton in Palm Beach Gardens, which is fairly newer, but not only do you have the retail, but you have the residential that's being built along with it to provide the critical mass for that retail to succeed. And Harborside Place, again, similarly to mixed-use centers that we've seen before and you have the amphitheater and just again, being an amenity for the city of Jupiter, which the western communities do not currently have. And lastly, Uptown Boca, which is more so the newest of these type of mixed-use centers that have been developed in the county. And this really just shows the industry trend of pedestrians and residents being able to want to live, work, and play in the same area. So there is an existing mixed-use district in the village, as you guys know, as was presented earlier tonight, Cypress Key, which was developed in 2005. This is the only development to use, utilize that designation. And the difference with that is that the density with the MXD is capped out at five dwelling units an acre with the max commercial and office FAR of .082. And there's also no vertical integration proposed in the MXD. As far as our proposed mixed-use center, we're proposing 10 dwelling units an acre. And although we're proposing 10, as the planning commission discussed, the highest density permitted in the village is 14 dwelling units an acre, which is allowed in the multifamily high land use designation. And as Ray mentioned earlier, our minimum FAR is going to be one and our maximum FAR is going to be 1.2. So to set the context and get into the actual comprehensive plan text, I'll just do a quick read-through of the actual definition. And the mixed-use social center is a land use designation intended to allow for large-scale, innovative, and urban mixed-use developments that provide integrated, vibrant, compatible, and complementary uses within a single development. This future land use designation allows for greater intensities and densities than would otherwise be permissible in typical zoning allowances. However, the increased density allowed through the MXS district does not exceed the highest density currently permitted in the Village of Royal Palm Beach residential future land use categories. And really what this allows us is it gives us a scalable solution to provide for more walkability, more bikeability, more authenticity, and also smart growth where it's not the typical single-family subdivided land where you have the residential mass, you have the entertainment, you have the retail and dining, all working together to provide a destination for the Village of Royal Palm Beach. And to get into specific texts as far as to the amendment that we're proposing, we are making sure that we must include residential, commercial, office, and public open space as these uses are necessary to work together and to make this vision occur. We're also, in discussions with staff, we confirm that we'll exclude non-residential uses, over-residential uses. So with our vertical integration, we're making sure that that retail and that dining remains on the ground floor while upper stories are dedicated to residential. And we're also making sure that we provide well-designed, usable, public open spaces designed with appropriate pedestrian connectivity as you might see in Meisner, as you might see in Alton and the other mixed-use centers around the county. And we are also ensuring that the mixed-use designation must be site-specific, so when anybody comes in with the MXS, it must be site-specific. And as far as access and frontage, it maintains access on at least one principal arterial road as defined in the village comprehensive plan, or it's part of an overall master plan that has frontage on two principal arterial roads. And lastly, we're making sure that the minimum affected area is 40 acres so that this is a collective development and that the density is based on a maximum of 10 dwelling units an acre of that total project site. And this goes into the FARs again, as mentioned before. And really what we're ensuring here is that through the mixture of non-residential uses and providing a minimum, residential uses and structured parking are making sure that that critical mass of residential proximity to the retail and entertainment makes this a viable use altogether with all uses coming and working in harmony. And we're also, in more discussions with staff, we came out to the number of open space as maintaining no less than 20% of the project site of open space. And we're also ensuring that either within the development or within a half-mile of the proposed MXS that we provide mixed-use and multimodal and transit hubs for any potential bus connectivity, multimodal connectivity down the line in the future. And that concludes my presentation tonight. We have me and our applicant here. We should be able to answer any questions. Again, staff recommended approval and so did the planning board, so feel free to ask any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Diane, we have any free comments on Agenda Item?
No mayor, no comments.
Do we have any hand raised on Agenda Item R15?
No mayor.
I have no comment cards on Agenda Item R15, so I'm going to close public comment on that and opening up for questions and comments for members of council.
So I appreciate the presentation. It's very nice. I appreciate the creativity that the applicant has and the desire to do what he wants to do in that section. I know, I think we weren't clear as a council when we were giving direction as what we wanted on that. I think we needed to see something so that we could better understand what we wanted or I can say as I wanted. I, I don't know. I can't speak for the rest of the council. My concern, as lovely as your, your examples were, three of them I know for a fact were noise issues for the residents for that. So like that tips me off. The high density, the traffic. One thing that residents tell us all the time is the influx that's already on that intersection and what more this will bring. I'll tell you, the size of it scares me because it's now, you can use it for any part of the village. So I'd like to hear staff, why you approved it. What was it about it that you liked that said, you know what? Or is it just that it met our, you agreed with what they were saying? Because it is, it is quite intense.
It is.
Yeah.
But I think that whenever you're trying to accomplish a development of this nature, that's exactly what you need. You need the square foot, the non-residential square footage, and you also need the units. So if you're trying to create a mixed-use development, this is what you, these are the, the contributing factors to a successful mixed-use development. It is the density. It is the internal intensity and density that make these types of projects viable or that's been the measuring stick. Sometimes they fail for whatever other reasons. But those, these are the measuring sticks for mixed-use developments is, is the density and intensity. Now, and then I also heard there's only one other... Now, and then I also heard, um there's only one other large, other than a redevelopment and an assemblage of property, commercial properties along the State Road Seven corridor. There's only one other parcel that, um or parcels, is the Weldon property. It's on the southeast corner of Okeechobee and State Road Seven that at this point in time would be able to take advantage of this M X S.
I'd like to answer that question too.
Bless you.
The main reason for the staff's recommendation is, is what's in front of you is technically accurate and technically correct. Uh we don't have a policy decision from the council as it relates to creating a new land use category that's considerably different than our general commercial and creating a new mixed use. We've been talking about it for several years. We've been talking about it in strategic planning. We've been talking about it in the different approvals. Brian has given, the developer has given a couple presentations. He has met with you guys individually about presentations. And um and, and, and we, we went with that and created a technically correct mixed use that I think accomplishes what was have, what has been discussed over the past couple of years. And that is, we want to protect our commercial corridor. We don't want to lose our commercial corridor to all residential. That's why you only see it at ten units an acre and not fourteen, or eighteen, or twenty, or thirty, or forty, which is pretty common in, in the, in the pretty intense uh mixed-use developments. The, the idea of, of, of developing residential over top of commercial and making them work together has been done throughout this country. But a lot of the malls are, are, are redeveloping to this type of development, and they are very desirable by the communities. So, so that's why you have a recommendation of, of, of approval from staff in front of you is that we, we've listened to you the last two years. And we, we are presenting to you that's something that is technically correct as it relates to a land use category. But it's a policy decision of the council whether they want to go in this direction. And that is why you only have a, a land use text amendment in front of you. You don't have the application of this to a piece of property. You don't have the zoning right behind this. Hasn't even been drafted. Hasn't, hasn't even been started. This is the very first step in, 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 in changing our land use designations to something that is different than anything else we have. And what's in front of you is something that's technically correct. And uh if it's not the desire of the council to go this way and is not consistent with the policy you have as, as a group, then it would be a recommendation. Denial if it is, we'll go with the, then we'll go with that and we'll go to the next step. Which the next step is where a lot of the detail is. As you notice, there's not a whole lot of detail here. Very little, actually, uh to make something this big happen. And it, it's because the, the meat of it will be in the, in the, in the zoning and all the, all the zoning charac- uh parameters and, and what they can and can't do and what it looks like and all that. So, we are looking for a policy decision. We think, um, and the devel- and the developers asked for it. I mean, the developer is the one who applied for it to change our, our comprehensive plan. So that's why the recommendation of, of approval. It's a, it is technically correct what you have in front of you and, and uh gives that council that opportunity to make, give us the policy direction.
And then Bradford, what you said is that it needs to be this intense and the density in order to be successful based on all the other things that you've looked at.
These are measuring sticks for viability of mixed-use developments. And that is the, the more intense residential, the more dense non-residential for these mixed-use developments. This is what they, this is, when I say they, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't want to speak for the Treasure Coast Planning Council, but I've had conversations with the Treasure Coast Planning Council. And they, they, they look at this project and actually, honestly, they're asking, why aren't you allowing eighteen to twenty-two units to the acre? But, but that's not, I don't think that, that's what we, like Ray was saying, what we were hearing with conversations with.
And the, I think that other part that concerns me is with, if we do have the M X D, M X S, is that it can go anywhere else. I know you were saying it was just that parcel, the one on Okeechobee and State Road Seven. However.
It has to be a forty-acre parcel, right?
Well, which is that one that they had mentioned.
That's it.
However, if there, we do have other areas, are there any other shopping places? So like, for instance, where the Bells is and that, that will not qualify. Okay, now if they get together with the other side where Toys R Us is, can that be considered one? Because now you're opening up the Pandora's Box into wait a minute though, but if we can merge, we now qualify for this.
Yes, this code would allow for, if there was a project that was forty, forty acres or greater, yes, they could use, they, they could benefit from these regulations.
Okay, so it can.
That doesn't mean they would get approval to do it, right? This is just an option.
They would have to approve this.
They would have to go through the comprehensive plan amendment and they would have to go through the rezoning in order to designate those properties as the, M X S land use map designation, and then you have to rezone to the M X S and then the site plan and things of that nature.
So, uh Bradford, would you, would you talk a little bit about uh your, your choice of term "social", "social center" and what, what that's all about?
So, when we were beginning to discuss this idea, this concept of integrated uses, and the, the conversations kind of gravitated towards, this is gonna be an entertainment district like um City Place. Um this is gonna be an entertainment center like um Guard, Downtown Gardens. And we were just kind of, you know, the whole term "entertainment district" kind of took my mind and other people's minds to a place where you go to, specifically to be entertained by the amenities of the product, of, of, of the tenants. What we want, so what the thought was is, you know, I, I looked for terms that we could insert into the actual name and district that would create a different feel or different idea whenever it was mentioned, and that is the social aspect. That is the community-building aspect that we are looking for in this development. A place where, you know, I'm just going through, uh you know, a, a, this, you know, mother, you know, stay-at-home mothers, you know, I was with my, stay-at-home, I was out there, I was, that was me on Saturday and Sunday when my, when Christie was working. And so it was, you're looking for a place to go mid-morning. You're looking for a place to get out, and this is one of those perfect spots where you could go grab a cup of coffee. You may see your neighbors there or, hey, um, you know, one of the girls, I'm speaking unpersonally here, contact one of the girl's friend's parents. Hey, I'm going down to the soc- you know, the social center, right? To grab a cup of coffee and let them run around on the green grass lawn that's gonna be in the center of the square. That's what the developer is proposing. Or to, when you're out eating, you know, you get a text from, you know, some people in your sphere or friends or family, hey, we're here. Would you like to meet after your dinner and we'll have a cup of coffee? And again, the kids run around and it's someplace where you're, you're building community. You're gonna, it's a place for community building, and a lot of that has to do with socializing with others within your community. And that's why the term "social center" came about.
All right, so um in, in the, in the sense of um the difference between what we have right now to provide a place to eat, a place to hang out, that type of thing, uh would you say that one of the significant differences is um everything's within easy walking distance?
Walking distance and also the open space concept. It's um with the twenty percent open space, that, that is just what it sounds like, is open space. Space that is not paved or is part of a building. It provides those areas where, you know, kids can run around and which is, or, and watch their children as they play. They're not, yeah, I like to keep my eye on my kids. This allows for that, you know?
So this sounds like something that'd be um certainly attractive to um, um young professionals, young families.
Absolutely.
Um and, and also I would, I would tell you from my point of view, as I get older, looking for a place where I don't necessarily have to get into my car and that kind of thing in order to drive to a place where I would really enjoy being, not just actually satisfying a specific need and that kind of thing, but also having that sense of feeling like I'm part of a community that exists right there. It's kind of like a neighborhood type, type thing is, is what I, I sensed um you were trying to do, the staff was trying to do to propose this. The, the concern that I've heard over and over again is additional traffic. In fact, I had someone tell me, you know, I see the value in doing something like this mixed use and it's okay with me as long as you don't add another car to the road. Now, that's an interesting condition. And um is there anything you want to comment on that? I mean, I, I have one area in particular I think is looking to try to address some of that.
If, if the land, if, if the land is developed, there will be added traffic to the roadway. There are, the applicant has gone um and approached the Lake Worth Drainage District and purchased a portion of their um canal system that was not needed to help with the traffic congestion. It was, wasn't just, we're going to have one entrance and exit, egress and ingress and egress point on Southern Boulevard. We're going to, we understand that traffic can be an issue and we are going to do what, what we can to the greatest extent possible to help alleviate that traffic. And now where he's connecting, there will be a cut-through where these people may not even have to approach the light uh whenever they're wanting to either go south on State Road Seven and they can traverse um this project or even going um west on State Road Eighty for that matter. They can cut through, take a left into the site. They can um, they can jump onto Sou- Southern Boulevard at the bridge, and they don't even have to approach that intersection. So there is opportunity for people to even avoid that intersection because that intersection is an issue.
Well, of course, one of the things that we've been talking about over and over again with, in the T P A uh is uh some kind of enhanced mass transit.
Right.
To deal with a problem with regardless of what is done here for a particular development or in a generic sense, a policy decision that gives us this as an option.
Right.
Regardless of that, we're gonna get more traffic.
And that language is embedded in this comprehensive plan amendment um that would, that would require the mul- multimodal transportation where it's not just an individual bringing in their car. Maybe it's, people are gonna be doing the park-and-ride and taking advantage of the Palm Trans services.
Or any other enhancements.
Right.
Mass transit.
Traffic. Yes, this brings more traffic. Uh a hundred people a day moved to Palm Beach County this last year. Fifteen hundred people a day moved to Florida this last year. There's not a law you can pass out there to keep that from happening. They're coming here. There's twenty-two million people living in Florida now. There'll be thirty-five million people living in Florida fifty years from now. They will come here. Providing them an alternative place to live versus half-acre lot or quarter-acre lots on the, at Everglades Agriculture Area from between here and Bel Glade might help minimize that from happening. The, the urban areas between us and the coast. Projects like this are being, being done by all the cities on the coast to give people, the seniors that are moving here, the young people that are moving here, an alternative to living on a half-acre site. It is more efficient for Florida. It does have the potential of, of protecting more sensitive lands by doing this. And in the meantime, you will get more traffic. And there'll be a transition at some point there where we say we can't build the roads any wider and we have to provide an alternative to wider roads. And, 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 and it, and at that point, we probably will have the feasibility to support a, an enhanced transit system. I don't think we're convinced of that this decade. But the fact is, we're not gonna stop people from moving here. And if we can, if we can redevelop in such a way, uh or provide developments in such a way that, that, that requires less driving and it's in the areas where we already have infrastructure, it's, it's desired.
Is that what the intent of that one bullet that says mass transit or multimodal facilities may be included?
Well, the, the reason that is there is because, as you know, Palm, T P A is planning the five-six-one plan. The five-six-one plan is, is a plan that has five north-south corridors and six east-west corridors, and it's connected with an enhanced transit system that runs north-south on State Road Seven, east-west on Okeechobee Boulevard, north-south on U S One, east-west on Lake Worth Road, and two other east-west connections. I don't remember what those roads are. The planning of that was done so that it hit ninety-five percent of the non-farm jobs are within two miles of that, of that corridor. Sixty-seven percent of the um residents in Palm Beach County are within two miles of that corridor. If you look at that corridor and what that, how that corridor looks today and how that, with an enhanced transit system, how that corridor will look after that's built, it'll be considerably different. It'll be, it will have higher density residential on it. And, and it will, if we create areas like this, they will become a desired alternative of those hundred people a day that are coming to Palm Beach County or those fifteen hundred people a day that are coming to Florida.
Providing with a readily available alternative to getting in their car and adding to the traffic.
That's correct.
I, I love when we always have the, the traffic discussion since I've been here, traffic, traffic, traffic. But just put another context on this particular uh situation. This traffic is not gonna be generated through the core of our city. It's on the outskirts of our city. Yeah, and a lot of the traffic that will be generated, it's not just people coming from other places, but the people who reside there will be within their own, you know, area in, in terms of, it'll be contained. So, you know, that's the reality of what this is, but uh it, the, the real, the long-term solution to traffic, we have to do a job, better job of providing options to people who will say, I really don't need my car. I have other options to get to where I want to get to. We are not there right now. And we're embarking down a path where we need to put the, what I call the groundwork, foundation in place uh to be able to achieve that. I don't think it'll be achieved. I think it'll be many, many years, but you gotta start somewhere and, 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 you know, it's kind of where we're starting. The other thing I wanted to point out, it was touched upon, is we did engage uh into an agreement to have a, the, the State Road Seven corridor study done. This fundamentally maps and, and, and is consistent with the feedback we've gotten that we've been getting from uh the Treasure Coast folks on where, 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 what's happening with, with that corridor and, and what they see the transformation happening over the next ten, fifteen years. Uh but last but not least, um I think we're gonna provide a tremendous uh social, right, entertainment venue for the families in our village where they won't have to go, you know, ten miles or fifteen miles someplace else. You know, they just have to get down on Southern Boulevard and, or State Road Seven, and it's right there. And, and I think that, that's gonna enhance um the village, uh you know, as, as a whole in terms of adding to the, the value proposition of why people live here and, and why they like living in Royal Palm. So I think, you know, this, this is all part of a much longer-term, bigger strategy. And if you already know, we have been going over this for the last eighteen, twenty-four months trying to figure out, well, how do we do this? And, and we challenged, you know, Ray and his staff to come back with a solution that would accommodate the ability of that, that, that bigger strategy, but also still protect us, that we're protecting the core of our village and we're not gonna create something that will get out of hand from us and have things happening. We will still have the ability to control this as we go forward um because of the way this has been structured. And I, I found it, it's interesting, I think Bradford mentioned, one of the members on the, the P and Z Board commission wanted to go for the full fourteen.
From ten to fourteen, yes, sir.
Which is, I, that's interesting. And, and I don't know, I don't know how many years ago was it, Ray? When we, uh once upon a time, we had- a time, we had, huh? It was eighteen, yeah. And we changed that and said, no, to, to address this, you know, control the density issue, we decided to change the rules and we lowered it down to fourteen. So the fact that, you know, staff has come back with saying the, the number we, you know, we should cap this at is ten, you know, is consistent with, with our policy model and thinking has always been in terms of what we do here in the village to, to address the bigger question of controlling density. So we're trying to create, you know, a solution here and, and, and I don't know if you all remember, when Ray first shared this with us, his hair was not quite as gray as it is now.
He had hair.
Because the challenge was, we had to really create a new ordinance, if you will, that didn't exist. And we had conversations with the applicant then and the applicant was saying, gee, is it going to take that long? We said, well, we're giving you like a minimum, it could be longer. But we've gone through that process, you know, we've done the, we've done, we've had our due diligence process done and it's brought us to this point now where this is what, what staff has recommended. Any other questions, Richard?
I agree with some of the points the, the vice mayor made about, you know, concerns. But I know as someone who apparently lives on the outskirts, that traffic is going to get a heck of a lot worse for me because it's going to do it, but whatever goes there, it'll be worse. My hope is, I hope it pans out, is that the Erica Boulevard and the way to pass through, because there, there is a lot, and especially if you're heading east on Southern and heading south on State Road Seven, it, and the Lowe's and that's the only plaza there now, it, it gets difficult and challenging at times. So I hope, I, I would think anyone heading south will help alleviate that. On, on the other side, people heading east out of the development are probably going to create a lot more issues on Southern heading east in the mornings, but no, that's going to happen with any kind of development. I was interested to see some of the, the comparison things that were up there. I, I don't think it's comparable to a city place. That's an entirely different animal. Not, I've been to Meisner, not particularly familiar with it, but the one that, you know, got my attention was the Alton because my mom lives up there and I'm kind of familiar with it. And I hope at this point I see, you know, the vision we've got and at this point, I can see going forward with it, but I'd like to, if I could get it from Ray, whatever the land use they have in Jupiter, I think it's Jupiter, for that Alton.
Palm Beach Garden.
I'd like to see, it's gardens?
Gardens.
Okay, for gardens. I'd like to see how that compares to what we're doing here because at least the ones I'm familiar with, it seems like it might be comparable in, in scope, although we're doing here, in my opinion, something that's, that's bigger than what they have there and better, but, you know, I live here and not up there. So, but at this point, I mean, Selena raises legitimate concerns and I'd like to at least compare what my experience is with Alton and seeing what we're doing compared to that and making it better. Maybe some of the other ones I'm not as familiar with, I can, I can take a look at it. But that's it for this.
I, I think we have a real opportunity here with, and I hear all the concerns and I appreciate that. Traffic's going to come no matter what. And while we can only control what we do here, what I'm hearing coming through the acreage is that their density is going to be, they're pushing high, high, high density out there. And so we'll be affected by that no matter what, no matter what we do here tonight. But we have a real opportunity to create another community space for people to gather. And I think that is so important because not only do we have Commons Park and all our other parks, but now we have this sort of urban place where we can also do a little shopping and do a little bowling or whatever it is or however we're entertained and, and just bring in community and we, we don't really have a downtown and I think this gives us another opportunity to gather.
Side town.
The outskirts town.
Any other questions, comments, member on council? If there are none, I'll look for motion. This is the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Diane, please let the record show that regular agenda item fifteen was approved for the first reading by a vote of four to one. And I think that that's it for the evening. No further business between us. We adjourned.